I'd like to call this September 9th Council Work Session and Regular Council Meeting to Order. We have Gail Humphrey here from the Recorder of Deeds and Nicole that was here tonight to do a presentation, but they're going to come back in October. So, Gail, why don't you explain what it's about?
Yes, thank you. So, newly-elected Recorder of Deeds in Bucks County, her name is Robin Robinson, and I'm her First Deputy, Gail. And when she came into office, she found out that the original historic deed books for Bucks County were in our county warehouse. I think like around in the 80s, they'd actually been cut, it was called guillotine, in order to be scanned into our computer system, and then left there for all these years. And they were beginning to deteriorate in rock. So, Robin started a program to help restore them and bring them back to their original beauty. And they're actually gorgeous books. We have a couple here with us today. One is a transfer of the King George, where the King George Inn is now of that property in 1782. Our deed books, the original ones, go back to William Penn in the late 1600s. We have naturally Falls Township all over the place with William Penn, William Penn. So, Robin has been going from municipality to municipality to ask them to consider making a donation to help preserve these deed books. There are 700 in total. We are almost halfway through. A number of municipalities have decided to partner with her in this effort. Ivy Land, Falls Township, Warrington, Buckingham, a whole host have decided to do it. And what she's doing to say thank you to them in return is forever memorializing the municipality's name in the deed book itself. And once preserved, they will now be saved for 500 more years. And they're great to look at. It's their original record. The handwriting is astounding to see. And we're just really lucky and fortunate that they were still around and we were able to save them because they were pretty much getting to a point where they were no longer going to be savable. So, we would love to come back, and we would love to bring a number of deed books for everyone to look at, for the public to come and touch and see and page through. We'll bring more books that are more Bristol Borough specific in addition to the King George Inn land. And, you know, we're just really thankful for the opportunity for you to let us come and share this information.
So, maybe you could come in early next month, and if people from town want to come up and look at them. The library doesn't have anything like this either, right? And so, maybe you could work something out with them, maybe to put them on display there.
Grundy, you were at the Grundy Library. Yeah, but they're not there now, are they?
No.
Yeah. Okay. You want to call the Grundy?
Well, I'm saying, maybe talk to Gene Williams from the Grundy Foundation and maybe put them on display there for a few days for people to go in.
Okay.
So, we'll see you in October and bring some more books.
All right. Thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a lot. Everybody on their package, you've got the agenda and everything we're going to go through tonight. So, I'm going to open up public participation. So, anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything, go to the podium and state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're on this side.
This side. Go ahead. Michael, can you shut that gate, please?
Sure. Thanks. Hello, everybody. How are you? I'm Michael Gorman, 311 Mill Street. I just have a couple announcements that I just want to make sure that the public's aware of what's going on because we have lots, a lot going on this month. First thing is Saturday, the 14th, is Italian Day. I just wanted to point that out because the date was changed. It's usually, was usually this past weekend, but it is this Saturday, the 14th. Our normal food, entertainment, all day, 12, noon till 8 o'clock. A lot of new vendors. The rain date, hopefully we won't have to go there, but the rain date is Saturday, Sunday the 15th. So, just wanted to make sure everybody knows that Italian Day is this weekend. Also, a lot of exciting things happening this week, which I know that Councilman Crotrochi will address, but we have the exciting ship coming in. Another update is that the facade program, Raising the Bar organized the design assistance team again. Looks like, you know, you're entitled to get that once. We've done so well, we were, they asked us to do it a second time, and we've been invited to do it a third time. All the paperwork's been submitted. We've had a pre-submission review meeting. We had over 35 businesses and people show up. It's in the, it's in the business district. That's what it's for. We don't regulate it. We don't tell who gets it. We just formed a design assistance team that helps people get from point A to point B to get their applications ready so that they could get the funding to enhance their businesses. So, I just wanted to point that out. We're going to start meeting, I'm on the design assistance team along with Rich Schneider and Joanna Schneider, and also Kathy Pope has joined us. So, we're going to start meeting with people. The when, so that would be the, I'm sorry, the 14, 15, the 17th and 18th. So, that'll be Tuesday, and we're going to send an email out to the people that have, that came for the meeting. But just want to make you aware that if you aren't at the meeting, don't feel like you missed anything. It's not a race. There's not a deadline. You could always contact me or Bill Pezza, but we welcome anybody to take advantage of this, and we could help the facades continue to grow in the business district. The other thing is the murals. The mural program, we got the funding for that. Raising the Bar is going to match that. It is underway. It looks like it's going to begin the end of September. We had some delays because of the summer, people's schedules, also the weather. So, the power washing's going to begin. All the legal, all the legalities have been worked out with the property owner and insurance and raising the bar. So, that's going to begin shortly. So, that'll be exciting. The other thing, I just wanted to mention that the River Runner, as you saw, it was down for a little bit. We had to replace the motor. It's up and running. It's bigger and better than ever. Of course, the motor, you know, was, it was two weeks past the warranty, but it didn't matter. We replaced the motor. It's up and running. It was missed for a couple of weeks, but just wanted to clear the air that it is up and functioning and running. And lastly, farmer's market. Just remember that the farmer's market is going to go through October. If you haven't been there, I would get down there. It's wonderful. They have great things, their produce, their jerky sauce, their pickles, their hummus, their guacamole, their chips. There's natural dog food, dog treats, there's soy candles. So, there's always more vendors coming. You may go a weekend where there's not a lot. That's because they have come on board. They're really excited to get on board. It's when they're there, they're selling like crazy. They just have other obligations that are coming up for these flea markets, and then they'll be going in. I think that's it. I just wanted to just update everybody on that, and I thank you.
Thanks, Michael. You got a question, Dave?
Yeah, yes, Mike. As you know, the coal sign down there on Penelope's old building on Market Street, they cannot keep, could not keep that coal sign there, deteriorate with the brick and stuff like that. Finally, they put it back behind it. Seems like it's going to be more long-term. Just, just a thought. I don't know where, Masonary Buildings or...
What's he mean with the murals?
Yes.
Yes. I, all's I know is that's all been worked out with our, I don't know the details. I just wanted to announce that it's going to begin. I honestly don't know what the backing, if anything, is going to be on there, but thanks. That's a great suggestion.
Something to keep him on.
It is, and I'll mention them, that too.
Thank you.
Okay. I knew they, I do know that that was part of it with the artists, had to get the proper backing, to begin with the power washing and things like that, so, but thank you. Anything else?
Is there anything that, I know that the Grundy Center, I mean, the Grundy, the Senior Center was supposed to get a dinner. Were you aware of the dinner that they were promised?
The dinner? No, a dinner, you know, I'm not going to get into that right now, but the so-called dinner that anybody was going to do, that was me giving back to them, to the community to do something. I'm also just spoke, we're going to be doing things with the hospital. That's been neglected for so long and overseen, and my, my position in this is to move forward with that. Forget all the he said, she said. There's a lot that's going to be happening there. And I just want to involve them, and it's just something that I wanted to do personally. So, that's what it's about. Can I ask you a question? Sure. So, I hope, am I okay with time?
It doesn't...
No, that's okay. That's all right. I don't need to...
Really doesn't pertain to council unless you have a count, something that...
No, no, I was going to just, I just had a question, but that's fine. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything?
Good evening. Ken Bixler, Cleveland Street up in East Ward. I know you have a full agenda, so I'll try to be as quick as possible. One thing I noticed, stat on 13, that they, they mowed down the flowers and bushes on the median strip there recently. I remember a few years ago, it was voted on, they were going to spend $38,000 for flowers. Is that correct?
$10 was.
Right, right. Exactly. Not the borough, no, right. Because the deal was like, they were going to cut it if, no flowers, or we were going to maintain it if they planted. Flowers were a mess. I mean, they were like, just weeds and debris, and it looked so much cleaner with it, with it down. I agree. But are we subletting or subcontracting someone to cut that? Is that correct?
From what I understand, and manager could probably answer this question, we never did anything there. They're maintaining it.
The state is maintaining it?
From what I understand.
I know Mr. Dillon's been out a couple of months now.
Not a couple of months.
He wasn't here last month.
Not been feeling good, and...
I wish him well. I hope he's okay.
He'll be here hopefully this week.
Okay, good. All right. The other question was the Mill Run Building. I see there's some piping and stuff out there, and hopefully they're moving along with that. Are you able to give us an update on that, or are you planning on touching on that?
The Mill Run Properties...
Mill Run Property.
Mill Run Properties, far as we know, everything's moving forward. Right now, they're doing site work. So, they're doing the parking lots, the underground piping and all that.
The reason I ask, I live in East Ward, and I know it was in 2015, they announced that it would, in two years, it would be completed. And if not, the property would revert back to the borough and slash the redevelopment authority. We're almost into 2020, and I know, I'm a little bit of a historian, that the Empire State Building, it took one year to build that in 1930. So, it seems like a long time.
That's a lot longer than we wanted to say. But, you know, they own the property, they're working on it. They're putting $11 million into it, so, you know, they promised us it would be ready this September, and it's not going to be ready September. So, I mean, what do we, what do we do? Do we take the property back? They got millions of dollars tied into it.
Okay. I just didn't know if you had an update. I see the...
The only thing we know is that they pulled permits. They're working, they're calling for inspections. The inspector's going out, he's inspecting things. Where's Kurt? Kurt, you want to give an update on Mill Run since you guys are involved with this
They started their site work a few weeks ago, and that's all the work that was part of their land development that they had approved a couple of years ago. And, you know, like you said, it's just been a slow go on that project, but, you know, they've committed to doing all the improvements that they promised originally. And they believe they'll be done by, I mean, they're trying to be done by like end of October, but that seems like a very aggressive schedule, and we've seen schedules come and go, you know, so, I know they're trying to hit it pretty hard.
And just for the record, Mr. Bixler, they put up a million dollars for site work improvements in escrow. So, that's a lot of money to put up to make sure what they're doing outside gets done.
And so, guys from our officer out there overseeing it, doing construction observation too as they go.
Last...
I just had a question on the same topic.
On the Mill Run thing?
Yeah.
Well, talk to me and when Mr. Dillon...
No, I didn't want to ask you anything. It was about the Mill Run.
Issue with him.
Well, I'm going to go on to a different...
Go on to whatever you want.
All right. The last thing that I have is last month, I was up here and I followed up on something that you told school director Jeff Poliavko. When he questioned when the Grundy rink debt was paid off, could some of that fund, that money go towards a recreation project? And you told him that debt service money cannot be transferred to another account, that it had to go back to the taxpayers and reduce mileage. And that's not what you told former, uh, former congressman Lutz. When he questioned a previous road resurfacing loan that was paid off, you told him that the money from debt service was transferred to the, to the general fund. I told you, and you, you just said to me, you didn't want to disagree with me, but you seemed like you had your doubts. So, I did bring proof tonight, a video clip. Would you like to see it?
I don't see anything.
What's that?
I don't need to see anything.
Oh, so you remember?
I know that you cannot transfer debt service to a general fund account. You can refinance if we paid something off. And you want to show me something later, I'd be willing to sit down with you.
Is there anybody else?
I would like to, I would like to hear it, actually.
You're not showing a video. You want to talk to me after the meeting?
All right. I'll show you after...
And if you're right, the next meeting, I will publicly say that you were right.
All right. After the meeting.
That's how we're running this, so...
After the meeting, we'll meet?
That's fine.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay?
All right.
Mr. Devine, you got something on Mill Run?
Yeah, I just had a question. Is Mill Run right now under the RDA, or is it with the ownership group?
Mr. Slacks, you explain.
What was the question?
The Mill Street, the Mill Run, I mean, the Mill Run Project, is that right now under the RDA, the umbrella of the RDA, or is it with the ownership group?
No.
No Run?
No.
The title?
Yeah.
The way it works is the, the developer is the equitable owner. They put up $400,000. The legal owner, the deed is still in the RDA's name, and until the project is complete, they won't transfer that.
Got it.
So, that's the way it works.
Okay. Now, the follow-up question that is, have they been paying, have they been paying their taxes, part of that LERTA?
No, there are no taxes until they, until they get an occupancy. That was part of the agreement.
So, part of the agreement, we were under the impression they'd be paying taxes until...
I don't know what impression you have, but the agreement was, once they got their occupancy, the five-year LERTA would start, and then after five years, they'd be back to paying the full taxes on the, on the new value. But there's no taxes being paid now because the RDA owns it.
Okay. That's what I was wondering. So, I'm just telling you because a lot of people in the borough believe that they were paying taxes as this is going on.
Because we made it pretty clear.
I don't think that you did.
Well...
That's good. Any other questions? Mr. Slacks.
Just two things I want to mention.
Wait, any other public participation on this side?
Just want to say something about the theater.
All right. That ends public participation.
Okay. I was asked to speak. So, just to remind everybody, next week on Tuesday, our next season begins at the theater. It's An Act of God starring Kim Wayans. And as the theater has done for many years, the first two nights, Tuesday and Wednesday, if you are from Bristol Borough, you can get a ticket for $5, okay? And people do take advantage of that. So, you can get to see the regular show for $5 instead of, I think it's gone for $43. You just go, need to go down, show that you're from Bristol Borough, and I think they'll give you up to two tickets. But that's only the first two nights of the run, and that starts Tuesday and Wednesday. And hope that everybody will come out and see what we think is going to be a fabulous show. Thank you.
Okay. Herbie?
Yeah, just want to mention, two incidents that the fire department responded to during August. One was, there was a vehicle accident in the 500 block of Radcliffe Street where the vehicle rolled over and the driver was trapped inside, and the fire department responded, removed the windshield in order for the driver to exit the vehicle. The second one was on August 28th at 2:30 in the morning. They responded to a fire, dwelling fire on Swain Street. The occupant fell asleep cooking, damaged the stove, damaged the cabinets. The good thing was that the smoke alarm woke her up. Otherwise, we could have had a very catastrophic situation. So, there's one for our smoke detectors, a save. That's it.
Question for the fire chief. Chief?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Chief, I have one question. Chief Slacks, I just wanted to confirm, when one of your company members gets a call to a response, an emergency response, they are considered borough employees? Is that correct?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
That's not true, but I'm not going to get into it, dispute over that.
Not true? Chief?
Thank you. Today, I went to Gadenzia with the several other chiefs from Bucks County. They recognized us and the emergency responders off the, Chief Slacks people in on this for the amount of Narcan saves we've had in Bucks County. The number that they put out there was 779 saves. So, that's pretty much, the lives are given a second chance. All of our officers from Bristol Borough have administered probably more than once Narcan. So, it was a nice recognition, and we appreciate them doing that. I just wanted to touch base and thank the public and especially the neighborhood of Washington Street on Labor Day. We had a barricaded subject, it was a mental health crisis, and was confirmed upon the officer's arrival to have a firearm. These situations are very delicate. A lot of times, people ask, why do you wait? Why is there a tactical team? Why is this? Why is that? I was trying to do the count and try to be conservative. That was probably my 30th barricade that I've been involved with. There's a very, there's a science to it, to do it the right way. And we're fortunate to be part of the South Bucks County SWAT team, which has a component of negotiators. They were able to eventually talk that individual out and bring about a peaceful resolution, even though it took several hours. We don't, you know, what we did is our job. We didn't escalate. We had very great support from the community. Council president got St. Anne's Church opened up. We were able to use their basement. Chief Slacks people, the fire police, EMS, fire were on hand. I just can't say enough. But I just wanted the public to understand why these things take time is because, you know, a police officer doesn't want to go to work that day and take a life. And by forcing these situations, that's what happens sometimes. So, I think we handled it in a very professional situation. I'm very proud of the ways the initial responders handle it. I'd like to thank Ben Salem, which I did thank, Falls Township, Bristol Township for their help with this. They're part of that team, and that's pretty much that on that. Be asking tonight for hire Jared Weiner, a replacement for Officer Harris as a part-time officer. And the other thing we saw on the agenda is the upgrade of the Comcast system. It's something we have to do. Our internet service is basically less than a house service. I know we had it for gratis for several years, but unfortunately, in today's technology-driven world, for us to even communicate with other authorities, even victims bringing up, giving us video, download and upload, it's just a cost of doing business. That's it.
Questions for the chief. Tony?
Yeah, the only question I have is, chief, we're talking about the Narcan and the opioid epidemic. I haven't heard as many overdoses much sooner. I don't know if it's just because we're getting immune to it, or do we start to see a reduction?
I'd have to say, if you'd agree with me, unfortunately, it's becoming a car alarm. Why you're not hearing it is because, and rightfully so, it's available now. Family members are carrying it. The individuals are carrying it. So, the emergency response isn't as much as it's needed because people have access to it. Has the tide turned? No.
Okay. Excellent.
I'd just like to thank the police, the police department for meeting with our children the first day of school and greeting them at the school. I think that was really nice and important for the kids to know that they're there for them.
Thank you for bringing that up. We were at every school. We were at St. Mark's. We were at Snyder Girardi. We had two officers. There was an officer at the high school. And again, we take those opportunities to meet the children in a good atmosphere, and we enjoy it as much as they do, so, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Eddie, you have?
Yeah, you can.
I just want to say, if anybody wants to have Narcan, you can just go to, there's meetings at the hospital, Little Bucks Hospital, St. Mary's. My husband and I attended, and we both got, you know, the Narcan. We have it at our home. Not that I know anybody that would need it, but if ever I do, I know how to use it. They taught me how to use it. So, if anybody's interested, keep your eyes open in the papers, and you'll see where you can go to get Narcan. It'll come up. I want to talk about Mill Run. I got a phone call from someone that they were starting work at 6:00 a.m., and they were doing a lot of banging. They're really trying to get work done right now, so, but that's not acceptable. 6:00 a.m. is not acceptable. So, I called Mr. Dillon, and we spoke, and he spoke to the RDA, and then he spoke to the people that are doing the work, you know, not the people working, but the owners. And they changed the time. They said that they were trying to get some extra work done early. We don't want them to do that because we don't, the people in the neighborhood were waking up, you know, and it's just not fair. It's not fair to people. So, I want everyone to know that lives in that neighborhood that it's been taken care of. If it happens again, please call Mr. Dillon or call me, and we will, you know, address it. Also, I want to talk about, I want to do, there's a group that wants to do banners for the men and women that have died in the service. And we're going to, I'm going away for a couple of weeks. When I come back, I'm going to put together a group of people that have contacted me on Facebook. If anybody else is interested, inbox me, and I will put you on this group. We want to get together, talk about how we're going to do this program, but we're going to get banners of pictures with the people's, you know, name on the bottom, the dates, when they were at war, when they passed. And we're going to try to, I don't know if I'm going to be able to do this yet, but I'm going to try to hang them around the monument and on Farragut Avenue, possibly Pond Street, just to get something nice in our neighborhood, just the way Mill Street, Radcliffe Street, and, you know, and I just think it would be a good thing for the people that have passed, for their families. People from, there'll be people from Bristol, and if anybody's interested in getting involved in this, just contact me, like I said, on Facebook, and I will include you in the meeting that I'm going to have for this. So, that's it. That's all I have.
Eddie, what do you have?
I have just a few quick things, and I can email it to Mr. Dillon, but I do have a sign on the 500 block of Bath Street that is totally faded. It's supposed to be a street sweeper sign, so I need that replaced. I also, I love the way the Luke oil came out. I don't know who took care of it, if it was the borough or actually the owner, but it looks great. Also, underneath the bridge, except the bridge right down Bath Street, it needs a cleaning. cleaning. I know before we contacted Paul Gosling Fire Company and they hosed it down. If we can do that again before the winter hits, because it's really dirty underneath Herbie, if we have a fire hydrant and the yellow in front of it needs to be redone, who does that?
I believe that would be the Borough. Just like to do the, you know, the corners.
Okay, okay, I wasn't sure. And I'm working on something with that, so I want to see if they can include that. Also, by the courthouse and the building there, someone told me it's called Teresa Kilcoyne Alley, but I don't know if that's the name of it. But we've had a lot of rain this year, but I've seen it before, there's a lot of water sitting there. And I don't know who would be, I guess we would have to go check it out, but the water's just sitting there. We have a lot of kids that cross that particular alley to go up to go to school. And I want to see if we can, see what we can do about fixing that before the winter sits and then we have ice and someone gets hurt.
I would just, Jim's hoping to be in a couple hours a day this week. I would email him, he'll get back to you.
Okay. And then, for anyone out there that continues to have issues that I believe need to go to the police chief, he's always available. I know he prefers for people to reach out to him than to reach out to us. So, it's not that we don't want to help you or we're ignoring you, but the best way to go is straight to the chief and he'll take care of your issues. And he's really easy to get in touch with. I wanted to put that out there, too. The old Pico Building where the firehouses, where they cleaned it all out, between Linden and the alley, there's a lot of weeds. And I know they've been working there and I saw they had a dump truck there or whatever. If we can get somebody to go see if they've cleaned it up yet and if not, if they can clean it up. Because the people that live on Maple and their houses sit back to that alley, use that alley to get to their homes and it's just getting overrun and it needs to be cleaned up. That's it? Oh, no. I don't know if we're going to talk about this.
Yeah, you can.
Okay. I saw this in my packet today and it's a high-speed internet from Comcast, which is for people who qualify receiving housing assistance, including Medicaid, SSI and others. This is, this helps the kids that go to school that otherwise can't get on the internet because their parents can't afford. And it is very expensive because I know I pay $100 a month just for Wi-Fi when I have kids. But this is a program, and I heard that Verizon had a program similar to it. I was speaking to Matt earlier. So, Matt's going to put it up and if anybody's interested, they say it's $9.99 a month or $9.95 a month. You can't beat that and it helps the kids because they all have work that they have to do on their computers or laptop or whatever. So, I just wanted to put that out there for anybody that's interested.
I think it would help a lot of people and the senior citizens.
Yes, and the seniors also, because I pay a hundred, I really do, I pay $100 a month and that's ridiculous. I tell my kids sometimes I don't want to pay for it, but...
And if you don't have this, I'll give it to yous to bring back to the building tonight.
Yeah, you can't beat it, $9.99 a month.
Part of this program, too, they've upgraded that program from before it was income restricted. It still is to some degree, but they've changed and upgraded, so if you make a little bit more money, you can still get it for $9.99.
There you go, so...
Anything else, Eddie?
No, that's it, thank you.
Louis?
Okay. It was really a fun weekend in Bristol Borough, as it has been for the whole month, but we started off this, this week with the Mill Street Run. And I'd like to thank the high schools and the runners, there are schools from throughout Bucks County and Montgomery County. Thanks to all the participants and the volunteers and special thanks to Chief Henry and Sergeant Moore's. Chief rode, but Sergeant Moore's was on the bike.
Delegation?
That's good. So, that was a very nice event and following, there was a Grundy Tea Party at the Foundation's grounds. So, I want to thank Gene Williams and his staff for hosting that event. And then, the evening ended, I want to thank John Hill for hosting the DeBoura Hospital fundraiser Saturday night at the King George. There were people from, local people and there was a lot of people from the DeBoura Hospital and over in Jersey and they, I heard nothing but positive things about, about our town and about the event, so, thanks again to John Hill. And thanks to Council President D. Giuseppe and our tax collector, Anna Larissy, for co-chairing the St. Mark-St. Anne's Festival. It showcases our town and, and a special thanks to Ernie and Pat DiCaro and the Bristol Environmental and the Borough Police Department for hosting the children on Tuesday, Tuesday night at the fair. And the chief was there and again Sergeant Moore's was there and a couple officers throughout the evening and it just seemed like kids all had a, had a good time, everybody was well-behaved and it was a nice, nice event. I also want to thank Kent Baird and Liz Rosenkrantz and Amanda Fuller for their completion of the Walk Works Report. It's a very, very, very nice report and I think it'll be on display in the near future. I also want to thank John Schneider, Mr. Dillon, Merle Winslow and George and his crew for all their hard work coordinating the visit of the Calmar Nickel, tall ship of Delaware. The ship will arrive in Bristol around 1:00 to 1:30 Wednesday afternoon. There will be a dockside welcome at the Wharf on Thursday from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. and I, I have some, I will give them at this, so possibly you can put it on the, on the website. And last thing is the Rotary Club of Bristol's will be holding a golf outing on Monday, October 7th. This year, they will be honoring Don Pitilull, Don Pitilull from the Caesar's Restaurant. The proceeds from this event help scholarship for the local kids and over the past few years, we've given over $20,000 a year to the students. So, this is really a helpful, helpful service to these kids. So, if anyone would like to, to golf or be a tea sponsor, they can let me know. Thank you.
Louis, Dave?
Thank you. I, I would just like Council to be aware of the lot located at 933 Garden Street. We've had some issues with that lot in the past. It is up for back sale right now. The starting bid on the signs, it's a little, little less than $1,400. It's 20 by 120 lot, that's not buildable, but we often talked about buying it and maybe parking for the residents or community garden over there or something like that, so I just wanted everybody aware that Doylestown has issued a statement on that, on that lot now. That's all I got.
Tony?
First thing I'd like to do is I would like to nominate Savatory Tassone for that $20,000 Rotary Club Scholarship, since he's the only one that showed up from the DOD place. Thank you, Council. The first thing I have is for Mr. Dillon, but he's not here, so I'm going to ask if you can, if you have the authority, Mr. D. Giuseppe, to ask Angie, the, in the accounting department, if I could get the corresponding bank statements, monthly statements for 2018. Mr. Dillon did give me a bunch of the checks that I asked for, so as I'm, as going over them, there's some ones that are out of order or missing, so I just want to double check with them on the, on the actual bank statements, the monthly statements. So, I don't know if you have the authority to let Angie know that I will get them?
Jim should be in, starting hopefully tomorrow, Wednesday at the latest, starting a few hours a day. So, if you email him, he gets back to you.
Okay, I'll email him.
I mean, even if he's not in, he'll get back to you.
Right, oh, okay. The second thing is, again, this is a Jim question, but I, I know that we've been talking on Garden Street for years about getting that grass cut that's on the Sephter Line. And the hardest thing that I have that's frustrating to me is that I know that there are other parts of the borough that we cut that isn't borough property. So, I just, to me, I just don't understand what's so difficult to have one of our guys that want to be cutting grass already just to go and just hit that whole thing? Because there are some people, residents, that do cut the grass that's in front of the fence, you know, and I don't believe it's their job to do it, you know what I mean? But some of them do it, it looks nice and then there's other spots where it's out of control, it's like a jungle, it looks terrible. And then, even where the baseball fields are, like when you go back to the bigger baseball field, the high school baseball field, where that dumpster is in the back, those weeds there have been like that forever. I mean, and to me, for all the people that come in there and use that facility, it's something that we should just clean up and make it look halfway decent. I got a light pole in the corner of Beaver and Mansion, I'll email that to them. And then, the last thing for now is I would like to add a motion to the, the agenda to remove all e-cigarettes and any type of vaping stuff in our, with all the stuff that's going on now and the news with these lung diseases and I think there's like five or six deaths already, like I'm not sure they know exactly what's causing it, so to err on the side of caution, I would like to, to ban all e-cigarettes and any type of smoking devices in all borough buildings. So, I would like to add that to the agenda for tonight. And... Oh, and I would like to, Mr. D. Giuseppe, if you could share with me what you know about emergency personnel that our chief wouldn't, about them being, when they get called to an emergency, that they wouldn't be considered borough employees?
Yeah, Mr. Devine?
Yeah, when I asked, when I asked Chief Slack about anybody that's called to an emergency that's part of their company or any company, once they're called in their own room or, or answering an emergency call, they become borough employees. He said yes and you said no.
Well, I don't think they are borough employees. I think once they're on the scene or once they get called or however you want to reference this, they're covered on the borough's liability for, God forbid, they get hurt or injured or something like that. But there are still volunteers that work directly for that fire company, they're not borough employees, in my opinion. Herbie, I could be wrong. I mean, that's a legal question, so...
All right, that's all, I just wanted to see, you know...
Like I said, I'm, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know.
And then, I guess the last thing, not that we can answer, I guess it's just a rhetorical question, but I don't know if, if Mr. Gorman, Councilman-elect, understands that when you offer somebody a dinner or food or any type of gift for their vote, it's, it's, it's not legal. So, I don't know if he knew that or not, but I believe that anytime you offer somebody and they get a gift for voting, I don't think that that is...
Well, if you think there's something wrong, Mr. Devine, you could call the District Attorney's Office.
Yeah.
All right. That's, anything else? Okay. May I already have anything?
Yeah, a couple things. I know we already thanked the Police Department for going into all the schools. I really appreciate the chief making sure that that happened again this year and at all the schools. And just reminder to slow down in those school zones, we will be monitoring those areas. I want to thank all the officers who responded to the Washington Street incident. As Councilman Crotrochi mentioned, we had the Mill Street Run this year. I successfully dodged all the cars at Mulberry and Radcliffe, I'm happy to say. Tying day is this upcoming weekend, the 14th, and Doop is the 21st. These are all big events in, in the borough that we have to look at from a traffic standpoint, from a policing standpoint. I'm sure everybody has on their mind that 9/11 is coming up on Wednesday. Nearly 300, 3,000 people were, were killed in that event. Eighteen were from Bucks County, nine from Lower Magfield. I'd ask you to add also your special prayers for the 343 firemen that were killed that day. Let's see. Items on, oh, before I forget, I don't know if anybody still gets to Craig or I hope they do. Big article in today's paper about the clock, excellent article. I want to thank Mr. Baumgartner, who has spent tens, tens of thousands of dollars in keeping that iconic Bristol Borough in, in place and in good running order. The items for the agenda, the hiring, as Chief Henry pointed out, Jared Weiner for a part-time police officer, hope Council will support that. Authorizing with Bristol Township for agreement to study emergency services by state and local government services. My only concern about that, I think it's, you know, would be a good idea, but I think we're the most studied fire department in Pennsylvania. This would probably be our, that I can remember, at least our fourth or fifth survey. As long as the borough goes into it with eyes open that these kind of things always in the end will cost us money. But we, as a municipality, are required to maintain fire protection, emergency medical services and police department under tax ordinances. The Comcast upgrade for the Police Department, it costs $3,000 per year. Chief Henry pointed that out. The, the challenge with that is it basically just gets us to where we need to be today, but not necessarily where we need to be down the road. You know, we're purchasing body cameras, we're purchasing nine new cameras for surveillance. All these things are added to the system that we already have, it's, you know, it's already taxed. And I know it's a cost, $3,000 a year, but I, I hope we, we approve that. The joint application, motion 18, with Bristol Township to apply for casino funding for the amelts for Bucks County Rescue Squad. I hope we seriously consider providing that. As I said earlier, we do need to provide emergency services and medical services to all of our residents. The, the last item, 19, the police vehicle replaces a car that was involved in an accident this year. Hope Council will, will also vote for that. And I think that's it. Thank you.
What I have is one to touch back on the carnival. I think that Bristol Environment, the funding they provided for that event was amazing and I was impressed with the kids, especially the children of God, the daycare center, how polite and mannerly them kids were. They all were dressed in blue outfits and they came in vans and there was 318 kids that that company paid for. Not only to put them on the rides, they paid to feed them and, you know, hot dogs, french fries, pizza, whatever, sodas, whatever they wanted, there was no end to it. And then, at the end, Ernie and Pat gave them ice cream. They bought ice cream from Uncle Dave's Ice Cream, so not only it was a great event, but to see the joy in their face, because there were a lot of kids that probably couldn't afford that and it was a great night. And Chief, you guys did a great job, your men and everybody that was there. So, it's something these kids will remember, but I'll remember seeing the joy in a lot of them kids' faces. The other thing is the Doop is the 21st, starting at 5:00. It's going to be another great event. Hopefully, you know, the weather's fine and we have a good night, so pass the word and come down to the Doop on the 21st. So, that ends our regular meeting. I'm going to just see if anybody else in the public wants to speak before we start voting. Anybody on this side want to speak on anything? Anybody on this side want to speak on anything again? That ends public participation. Mary, you have anything else?
The only thing I have is that I've been talking to the census people. You know, next year is our biennial census, it'll be taken during 2020. And, you know, it's very important to us, especially from a, a funding standpoint, that we get a good count within the town, not only for us, but also for the school district. I'd like to maybe request that maybe in November, that, young lady, her name is Aldila Morax, she's from the Philadelphia Regional Census Center, just have her come in and maybe talk for about 15 minutes about the census and how it'll be conducted. I think this is the first year that it's going to be offered to you online as, as something that they've never done before. I'd like to bring her in, because this is a key piece to a lot of different grants and so forth that, that we have and we want to make sure we get a good counting. That's all.
Okay, so we're going to start with item number...
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the council meeting minutes of 8:519, to accept the treasurer's report for July 2019, to accept the police and DJ's report for July and August 2019, to accept the fire chief's report for July and August 2019, to accept the inspection department report for July and August 2019, to accept the public works department report for June, July and August of 2019.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the hiring of a part-time police officer, Jared Weiner.
Second by Mr. Crotrochi, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize...
I'd like to make a motion to authorize approval resolution for preliminary final land development for 418-430 on Jefferson Avenue, TMP number 04-023-13239, plans dated 3/28/19, this devised on 6/21/19, and expiration date for this is September 30th, 2019.
Second by Mr. Crotrochi, questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the approval of resolution adopting the 2020 minimum municipal pension obligation, the police is $581,083, 2019 obligation,
I have a second.
Excuse me.
Second by Mr., Dave, did you raise your hand?
Yeah.
I thought you did, I didn't know, by Mr. Gerard, any questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the approval of resolution adopting 2020 minimum municipal pension obligation, non-police, $603,189.79, 2019 obligation,
I have a second, second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments, all those in favor?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize adopt, an adoption of ordinance, amending zoning ordinance, chapter 27 of the Borough Code of Ordinance relating to the location, placement, construction, and maintenance of tower-based and non-tower-based wireless communication facilities and small wireless communication facilities.
I have a second, second by Mrs. Cohen, Mr. Salerno, you want to speak on this briefly? Is everybody aware what this is?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the others?
Mr. President, I'd like to authorize the approval of resolution for experimental placement of a stop sign at Bridle Path Road and Landreth Manor.
I have a second, by Mr. Crotrochi, questions or comments?
Yeah, just a question, like what is an experimental placement, do we have to do any kind of traffic studies or anything, or just we can put it wherever we want?
Do you want to comment on that?
So, in order to place a permanent stop sign, we have to get the engineer's recommendation and all, that takes some time, but the ordinances allow us to put one in before that, while we're doing the ordinance to try it out, and in this case, I think Mr. Dillon and Mr. Waldron felt that it was a safety concern, so we're putting it up and then hopefully next month, if the engineer recommends it, we'll adopt it as a permanent stop, we did this on Market Street, we did a preliminary and then we did a final.
Any other questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the others?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertising of an ordinance for a stop sign to be placed at Bridle Path Road and Landreth Manor.
Second by Mr. Crotrochi, questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the number 12?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize approval of resolution for the active transportation plan, Walk Works Program.
Second by Mr. Crotrochi, questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the number 13?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize approval of the resolution for certified local government CLG program renewal.
Second by Mr. Crotrochi, questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the number 14?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President, to authorize the intergovernmental agreement between the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission and the Borough of Bristol for participation in the certified local government program.
Second by Mr. Crotrochi, questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the others? Number 15?
I'd like to authorize joining with Bristol Township for agreement to study emergency services by state local government services.
Second by Mr. Crotrochi, questions or comments, Mr. Devine?
Yes, by joining with Bristol Township, how does, how would that help us?
Bristol Township doing a study at their expense, they just including us at no expense?
Oh.
That's pretty good, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments, all those in favor? And the others? Number 16?
Mr., um, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion, no, a motion, authorize advertisement for bids for basements, street improvements.
Second by Mr. Gerard, questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the others?
Mr. President, I'd like to authorize, make a motion to authorize Comcast upgrade of police department at the cost of $3,000 per year.
Second by Mr. Crotrochi, questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the number 18?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize joint application with Bristol Township to apply for casino funding to purchase new ambulance for Bucks County Rescue Squad, the estimate cost is $133,700.
Second by Mr. Crotrochi, questions or comments, just so everybody knows, the Bucks County Rescue Squad had approached me and they appointed me to their board of directors along with Mr. Crotrochi and Mr. Dillon, I think the mayor's going to be appointed shortly to that board, and we're trying to work, we're Bristol Township now, and we're starting to get along very well, and we're going to do this joint venture to try to get them a new ambulance at no cost.
Good.
So that's just one of the applications we're applying for, we're also applying for other casino funding, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the others?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertising police vehicle 2010 Crown Victoria with 80,000 miles for sale in the municipal.
Second by Mr. Gerard, questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
I don't know, can we just go to 20, which is Mr. Devine's motion, right? Devine?
Yeah, President, I would like to add a motion to remove all e-cigarettes and other smoking devices throughout borough buildings.
I have a second, second by Mr. Gerard, questions or...
The reason I'm going to second that is I read the article and I, apparently what's happened is that the e-cigarettes, the vitamin E is vaporized and it gets into people's lungs, and then, then it solidifies in the bottom of their lungs, and that's why people are having lung problems and things like that, so, so, we're just getting into it, but that's what the article that I read said, and it scares the fuck out of me, so I'm sure nobody wants to breathe it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, everyone, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the others?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.